In my class, it's a class of sort of anything that's going. But since I've been at Mount Horeb, this has sort of fallen to us when we've had people running for the board. And that's why a lot of the board members or people who run for board, I know. It's nice to see them all again, and it's a nice hearing out. Some years we've had it where it's me and the person filming and the people running, and that's about it. Like, thanks all for coming out tonight. And so is Ray Waller and Corey Olson. Introduce themselves and we'll get going. By the way, the recording of this will be on the district's webpage, and then we're also live streaming, so we're good to go. All right, up to you guys.
Hi, we'd like to welcome you to the Mount Horeb Area School District for our school board candidates forum. My name is Raymond Waller.
And I'm Corey Olson. We'll be asking the questions this evening. The six candidates here are as follows: Joel Craven, Carly Fisher, Kristen Karch, Leah Lipska, Adam Mertz, and Jeff Shields.
We would also like to introduce other notable members of our audience: Dr. Steve Salerno, board members Rod Heiss, Kim Saylor, Mrs. Aragoni, Mrs. Rothimer, and former board member Sue Bryce. We chose the order that the candidates answered the first question with a pick of numbers. Each candidate will get two minutes to answer the question. When the time is up, there will be a signal.
All right, well, let's begin with tonight's first question. Why did you decide to run for school board, and what is your vision for the district?
So what signal am I looking for? Somebody to dance across the front or something? Uh huh. So I drew the lucky first card to be able to answer this question. So why did I decide to run for school board? Well, in simple terms, to help. I've noticed in the last few school board elections, there's been a limited number of candidates that have chosen to run. And so I figured I could certainly help if people would allow me to do so. Now, we had 11 candidates this time, which is a fantastic thing. It gives the community lots of choice and maybe some different ideas, right? So that's, in short, that's what we're looking at. My father was actually on the school board growing up, so the idea of public service and some of the things that he was able to do for our school where I grew up was interesting to watch, fun to see, and I'd like to model that behavior for my kids as well, so they understand that public service or working within a community is as important as any professional job we might have or anything like that as we look at it. So the hope is to offer what little skill I have. In terms of vision for the district, and we'll get into this more in some other questions, but we need to be a destination district not only for students but for educators in the state of Wisconsin. When we look forward, competition in education is fiercer than it's ever been, and that's only going to get more so. And so we need to find ways to continue to expand offerings to our students and focus on what does the student experience really look like in our district so that people want to be here. As far as educators, we need to be focusing on making sure they feel supported by the community, making sure they have autonomy within their classroom. These are professionals. Many of them have more education than I'll ever dream of, and we need to appreciate, support that, and make sure that they feel like they can have all of the tools available, all of the facilities available to them to fully explore what it means to provide education for students in the town of Mount Horeb. We've got to be a destination district. It's the only way we're going to be able to compete. Did I hear a ding? Is that the signal?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
There's no, wait a minute, there's no sound.
Sound.
Okay.
Just a minute.
I can start all over. Thank you for the practice run.
Time's up, will be out, I'll kind of just put my hand up.
Okay, don't worry.
Here. It's gonna be a while. All right. I'm Carly Fisher. First, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out, everybody who's watching on the livestream, students who are putting this on. It's just really awesome to be here and a real local experience, and just great that you're doing this. So for me, why I'm running, I think the past two years certainly have been hard on all of us, right? Nobody would deny that. And at some point in the last two years, it occurred to me that the normal of 2019 isn't coming back in the same way, right? We're not, I became, I started to become frustrated with this, with the concept of back to normal, because it looks so different for so many of us. We've been through so much. We've lost jobs, we've lost loved ones, we've all gone through a lot. And so I think that we, as we come out of the pandemic, I wanted to figure out how to help us find the new normal, how to look forward, and take what we've learned over the last couple of years and make things better for all of us. How can we find the things that didn't, that we learned over time that we didn't need to do, that we can throw away now? Or what efficiencies have we found that we can bring forward? And so I'm here because I really am excited about that disruption. I think it can be a great opportunity to rebuild a school system and a school district in a way that makes schools better for everybody, for all of our students.
Jeff Shields. Why did I run for the school board? First thing is, when my wife and I decided to move here four and a half years ago, the schools was the number one reason why we moved here. The Mount Horeb feel close to Madison, without the big Madison schools, not saying there's anything wrong with those, we just wanted to raise our kids in a smaller school district. So that being said, we, I always felt like, you know, voting and everything for me wasn't enough, I just needed to be more involved. And I heard a speaker once say, if you want to be involved, if you feel your vote isn't mattering, or if you just feel like it, you just go vote and then you go home, he said, start at the local level. You can start with your school board, your village board, that's where you can make an impact sooner than just casting a vote, which is very important, but it's more hands-on and to Joel's point of service, I just felt like I had a calling to serve more than just casting a vote, which, like I said, is important, but some of us just feel like we needed more Vision for the district. As a parent, I have a second and third grader in the district, and any parent can relate to this, I'm sure. You send your kid to school, number one thing for me is I want him to be safe, in a safe environment, learning opportunities, and I want them to be challenged, supported, and every single student, if it's my, if it's my kids, anybody up here in the audience, they need to be given equal opportunity for everyone. To succeed, to thrive, to grow. So as far as my vision and why I ran, those are basically the main reasons, and that's it.
Thank you. Kristen Karch, thank you all for coming as well. I'm a little more scripted, I apologize, I get a little nervous at these kinds of things, so bear with me, but I felt it very important for me to serve my community. I definitely have a passion for being a positive role model. I do that through coaching as often as I can. It's an area of great passion for me, and I just felt a calling to do, bring what I can to the, you know, children and the educators and the staff of this district. I want to give that same passion, time, and energy that I give to my coaching. I feel that my experience and my strengths align really well with the role of a school board member, and the final push to make the commitment came from actually my mom and my sister. I had been talking about it for many months, and I was kind of, as Steve probably knows, I was one of the last ones to turn in my ballot. They just gave me that extra confidence and push and nudge to put my name in there. It was something, you know, like I said, I was thinking about for a long time. My vision for the district is to do our best to, you know, remove the politics from decision-making and focusing purely on what is going to provide the most value for the majority, and help ensure our district is a place outside families pursue for their children and inside families never want to leave. So very similar to what Joel mentioned. I want to help ensure that operations run smoothly and efficiently, so our focus as a board can be on the policies and procedures that have the greatest impact on student achievement and success. That will allow greater avenues for learning and pursuit of individual talents above any set standards. I do seek to have a collaborative relationship with the staff and students and community members, other board members, and the superintendent, where we build respect for each other's unique perspectives and build a strong mutual trust.
Sorry, I knew I had to do that before. Hi, I'm Leah Lipska. I have been on the board now for nine years, and I would like to continue to do so. I have four kids in the district. My oldest is a senior, my youngest is in kindergarten, and by the time my youngest graduates, I don't know if anyone sees this aloud, but I could have grandkids by then, mathematically. So, you know, I've kind of been through the long haul here. You know, I tell my kids, see the change you want to see in the world, and that's why I ran nine years ago. And so 20-plus years ago, we moved to Mount Horeb. I'm a product of the Madison School Districts. Again, nothing wrong with Madison, but we wanted that small-town kind of feel. My husband grew up here. And so I want Mount Horeb to be, my vision is we are that number-one school district in the state. Everyone wants to come here. You know, we have the best, we have the best sports programs, we have the best music programs, we have some fantastic STEM programs. I'd love to see us grow all of that curriculum, and so if people want to be here, people will come from all over. And that is my, that's it, short and sweet and to the point.
Hi, everybody. Last, on the list here, Adam Mertz. Pleasure to be up here in front of all of you. You know, I was in newspapers for a long time, and in that, in that field, you're not allowed to run for public office. So this was something that was entirely off my radar. When I stepped out of that business in 2013, I started getting involved in volunteerism, a little more ingrained in the community. We had moved here in '99, and that's just sort of grown over time. I've just been so excited about how this town looks out for itself and bonds together. And I'm always looking for other ways to give back, and when the possibility of school board came up, I was very interested. Once I talked to folks who've served, who had served previously, teachers in the district, it's a position where you can make a real impact in helping out kids, providing the best educational experience possible. I know it's been a really difficult last two years for, you know, pretty everyone, pretty much everyone who's involved, and I'm just really fully focused on moving us forward. A lot of people have talked to me about this, and this is how I consider myself, so that's always nice when it mirrors, that I'm a bridge builder. I like to engage in conversation, I like to hear a variety of perspectives. It's really important, and I think it proves with the number of candidates that ran in this race, with the people who voted in the primary, with the folks here tonight, that this town really cares about the education we give to our kids. So I'm excited about that part of it, and I'd love to be part of this work. As far as a vision for the district, you know, I just, I want us to dream big, and not, not in scale. We're not Verona, we're not Middleton, we're not Wantakee. I don't think we want to be that. I think we want to be the best Mount Horeb that we can be. And it has been touched on by a few people, pandemic has given us an opportunity to rethink how we do education, really build on a lot of the positive steps we've made in the last couple of years. I guess I'd start down, like, I had a few things I wrote down here that I want the district to be. I'm dreaming big. You know, I want it to be a place where everyone feels welcome, respected at all times. I want that to be student-led, I want students to feel why that's important. That includes for students of color, students within the LGBTQ community, I think that's very important, to celebrate differences and to have students appreciate that. I want an environment where students, where you're encouraged by your curiosity, take ownership of your education, really be able to find your, find your passion and let that drive. And I was very encouraged on our district tour a couple of weeks ago, we got to see the addition at the high school and all the STEAM capabilities we have back there. It was like, man, I wish I went back in school. Think about like practical and application of these, you know, math, science that you learn. And that can be the hook for a lot of kids, to get them interested in some of the, you know, the harder sciences and bring them along. I mean, there's a trout farm there. That's unbelievable. I just love seeing things like that. You know, I want, I want every kid who comes into this school district to walk out with an education that prepares them to be citizens of the world. So obviously the functional skills, but really just an understanding of how to interact with people from all walks of life. We have a great community here, and we do our best to send kids out with everything they need, math, science, whatever. And I know that we've had some, you know, discussions about diversity, and there's uncertainty about that. I really just, I want us to embrace that and all come to the table and talk about it, because I know there's a path forward that everyone can, you'll get their arms around, have some hard discussions about the opportunities we're giving kids. I want every kid to walk out of here being proud of the education they got.
All right, so for question two, what do you feel makes you the best choice of candidates running for school board?
No, it's me? I just talked myself out. Is it Carly? Or Leah?
Carly. Yeah, it's Carly. Oh, all right. Sorry. You pulled my table very well. Okay. I think over my, over, over my career, my, my life, I've had a pretty eclectic background that I think has given me a wide variety of skills and experiences that I can draw from in this. I started my career in the arts and in higher education fundraising, where I really learned how to build good relationships between individuals and institutions. I later moved on to Epic, where I've been for the last 18 years, focused on pricing, accounting, finance, contracts, budgets. So I've got all of those, like, business skills, the quantitative stuff, the stuff that goes in the day-to-day running of a school district. I've also spent more than half of that career in supervisory positions, so I know what it is to set expectations, to measure outcomes, and hold people accountable for meeting them. And finally, in my volunteer work over the past several years, I've been the state chapter lead for the Wisconsin Chapter of Non-Demand Action, and in that role, I have learned a whole lot about how to navigate challenging conversations among very diverse groups of people, all working toward a common goal. I've learned the state legislative processes, I have planned and executed large statewide events, overseen communication and messaging, and strategic planning. And so on a personal level, what all of these things have combined to give me is that the good data sense, the business sense, but combined with the people's skills, right? Like, I know data, and I know people's processes. And then finally, I'll wrap up just by saying that I have been lucky enough and honored to be recommended by the Mount Horeb Education Association, which is something I'm super grateful for and humbled by their, so many of your teachers have evaluated my qualifications and given me their vote of confidence. I'm very proud of that, and, so yeah, that's been.
So I've had my own masonry company for over 20 years. Basically self-employed. What I deal with on a day-to-day basis to me is exactly what happens with the school board. So say we go to a job site, I have to deal with multiple trades, say electrician, plumber, excavator, everybody has to work together as a team, have to keep communication open. My view of what should happen might not necessarily be the same view of, say, what the electrician needs, what the plumber needs, but you come together, you figure out a plan, and the ultimate goal is to finish the job, get the job done. And basically, the school board to me is, it's the exact same thing. You'll have a view, and your view might not necessarily be 100% the view that works at that times, but you need to, you need to adapt, and everybody works together to figure out what we need to move forward and do what's best for everybody to get the job done, which would be for the school district. Like I said, in the end, everybody agrees, we all have a common goal, it's what's best for the kids, and that, that's where we need to go. So that's it.
So I have a long career. I also worked Carly at Epic, a long career in project management, project direction. I'm a director of a healthcare company now. I've worked on large, complex projects over my, my career. On a regular basis, I'm responsible for strategizing, making goals, and executing on those, on the plans to achieve them. I work in an environment where the dichotomy of doing what is best for most is at constant, like, versus trying to do what is like the best choice for, for all. So you're always constantly having a battle, like, okay, I would love to be, do this for everybody, but that's not the best choice for maybe the business, and so now we have to, we have to balance the pros and cons of everything. I believe though that I am very skilled at explaining the why. The why behind the decisions that get made, and helping those that may not have been happy about that decision ultimately respect and understand that reasoning, which I think is a very important thing for a school board member to have as a skill. We're dealing with a lot of different personalities, more so probably than even a singular business that has a very single focus, and we really do have to have that ability to take everything into account and then make that, make the, make the decision, stick with it, but also always explaining that why and the reasoning behind that decision so that, so that we are all involved in it.
So as I said, this is my ninth year on the board, and with Mr. Hannah no longer in the running, I am the longest-serving board member that we currently have. With that comes a lot of knowledge of why we've done things over the last nine years, why we haven't done things, and that history is, is important, especially when we start talking, we're going to talk later about naming rights. When you start talking about these things, it's good to know why we didn't do something. That doesn't mean we won't do it now, it's just to understand why it hasn't happened in the past. There's a, there's a big learning curve with this job. It wouldn't seem like it, but school finance, Scott Young, I think, has a degree that, whoo, school finance. There's, there's a board game you can learn how to, is very complex. And so the other thing is, one of the two main jobs of a school board are to supervise the superintendent and to write policy. I love writing policy, I love the shoulds, the shalls, the musts, the musts, all of those words and what that means in a policy. I worked for the Department of Corrections for 15 years and wrote a lot of internal policies, so it's kind of my wheelhouse. I'm currently a consultant and dealing with all the different types of people I deal with on a, on a daily basis. I have learned some great skills on how to deal with difficult people, or sometimes it's like herding cats, when you've got 20 people and they all want different things, and it, it's a, it's a skill set that, that's helped me on the school board. Also, don't feel like it so much right now, but I'm actually pretty good under pressure. We've had some, we've had some high-stress situations in the last nine years. When I went into labor at a school board meeting, we just kept going. So, you know, it's dealing with the stress that you wouldn't believe comes with a job like this. You'll make a decision that you actually think is a really benign decision, like, we're going to give away apples in the lunchroom. Nope, I don't like apples, I'm allergic to apples, I would rather have bananas. That's not a healthy snack. Like, you will make somebody upset, and so the other thing that I've learned over, over the last nine years is to have, to have thick skin, to not take it personally, and to just kind of, kind of roll with it.
Uh oh. Just remember, my votes are still up for... You know, I think, I, I, there's... So far, I know there's tough movements and tough decisions, but I have enjoyed this so much. I, I think that my kids have attended every one of these schools coming up. I have a senior now, Delaney, and a freshman, Shavon. I've made a lot of relationships with folks, with teachers, with staff members, community members throughout that time. I feel like I have that great consumer understanding, and that's what I was getting a little bit about, peering under the hood. Where I think I can learn and grow in that area is that I do have a lot of connections in the community, a lot of experience on boards of exploring these issues more deeply. I spent, I got involved first at Children's Community School, the Montessori school over on the west side of town that I was in 4K. Spent about seven years there, I've been at Neighbors Helping Neighbors for the past 10, you know, dealing with a lot of community needs and a lot of tough issues behind the scenes, helping out a lot of kids in the schools to help them compete. I would say from like a professional experience kind of thing, I don't have a story about going into labor. I didn't want to compete with that. I did, I do have years of journalism experience, which I think has served me well in a professional caliber a lot of these times. It's a pressure-packed environment, you're trained to research, you're trained to ask tough questions politely because you want to get the right information out. To, to listen, I think is a big skill also. I like to listen, I like to hear more about where people are coming from and try to drive to the, the heart of issues. The last four years I've spent now at Human Mutual Group, many are familiar with, it's a financial services company, and I'm in strategic communications. I work directly with executives, senior executives, who are launching their strategies, forming, launching, implementing, and executing other strategies within a profitable financial game plan. And I've seen a lot of, and been, you know, party to a lot of these conversations about what success means, what it doesn't, and how important that communication is through that is, you know, everyone likes to overvalue themselves in terms of career, but communication is just something you can't get enough of. And I, we'll get into this a little bit later, but I, I feel like I can bring that, I can bring a lens of what more can we tell, what more can we explain that's going on in the district. Controversial, but also a lot of the good things that we need to hear more about, and so that people who are taxpayers, who are funding us, understand the value they're getting for their investment as well. I guess I'd also say that, you know, I was fortunate enough also to receive the recommendation from the MHEA, and I really treasure that, and the respect of the teaching community going forward, administrators, taxpayers, kids, all this is a balance, and I'm going to give you my honest take on it, whichever way it falls, and realizing that you're not going to make everyone happy all the time, but you are going to know where I stand and you are going to have a voice.
Oh boy, wrap up this, how do I follow those five? So the question is, what's, why am I a better choice? I guess I would rephrase that question. I don't know that I'm better, I'm different. And I could give you the litany of my resume and what I do, and I'll give you a little bit of that certainly, but I think the most unique thing that I can offer to this district and to our community, I work as a financial planner for K through 12 educators all over the state. That's what I do all day, every day. I get a glimpse into how other districts operate, I get a glimpse into what works for them and what doesn't. I think that's something valuable that our district can use. Not all their ideas are great, some of them are awesome, but I can certainly bring that to our district, and I think that would be helpful as we look about, look at how do we move ourselves forward? And again, the competition part of this, I don't think we can overstate it enough. How do we remain competitive and how do we really make sure we bring the best and brightest to Mount Horeb and keep the best and brightest at Mount Horeb? So that's something that's unique, that's different. I mentioned I worked with educators, I've been a financial planner by trade. Prior to that, I worked as a consultant for a... that, I worked as a consultant for a very large public accounting firm, so when it comes to the business stuff, uh, I can do it, I can, I've been doing it for a long, long time, um, but from a consulting perspective, I think where that really helps is, a lot of times, when we're confronted with a very, very large problem, we tend to go for the very, very large solution, and we spend a lot of time and energy thinking about this big problem and this massive solution, the reality is, we're a community of approximately ten thousand people, right? How do we make this better for one student, one educator, one administrator, one community member at a time? That's what a consultant does, that's what I spent my entire career doing, and that's what I do for educators on a daily basis, you have this massive problem, you wanna retire someday, well, someday really isn't a time, and how much do you need, well, some isn't enough, or it's not enough, right? So how do we carefully define that, here's the big problem, but here's the root issue, this is what we have to solve for, I think you mentioned that, Adam, a couple times, going to the root of the problem, and working on solutions at the root of the problem that make life better for one person, one day at a time, I think that's what's different about what I might be able to bring to a district.
Thank you all. For our third question, uh, besides COVID and mental health, uh, what is the biggest problem facing this school district there?
Me, sorry?
Yes.
So, um, I'm gonna give an answer, and this isn't, I guess you'd describe it as a sexy answer, but, um, to me, and Dr. Salerno was nice enough to give me a tour of all the facilities, and the very first building we went to was the bus garage, and I met the transportation coordinator, and as Joel said, like, big problem, let's try to figure out, you know, a simple, and that, that in my head was what I thought, like, I know there's a problem finding bus drivers, I'm like, hey, it's gotta be as simple, as simple as, maybe they need more money, or, you know, I didn't know, and it was a rude awakening when he said, it's all about the licensing, so you need a CDL, commercial driver's license, and to be a bus driver, you're sa, you have the same license as, say, a semi-driver driving an eighty thousand pound eighteen-wheeler down the road, and so basically, all your, all your licensing, everything, it's all grouped together, and, um, his point was that people, like, say if you're a retiree, you don't wanna take all the tests to just drive a bus, um, and then I talked to him the other day on the phone, just to kinda get an update, and he said, February seventh, it, the problem became even worse, because the, on the federal level, they passed, they made it an umbrella, so basically, now it's every single person that gets a CDL, you're all taking the exact same test, if, if you're gonna drive a bus as a retiree for, you know, six, eight months out of the year, or if you're gonna drive hazmat, everything else, so, that was a rude awakening as far as like, okay, now what's the solution? And honestly, it was, it was a ti, a difficult situation to be in, because with it being on the federal level, um, obviously, we all know how the federal government works, it's not like, boom, it changes tomorrow, um, and when I was talking to him, I asked him, I said, so do people realize that this is, this is crucial in the district for, say, I'm not gonna speak for Dr. Salerno, but if we don't have the amount of bus drivers we need, let's say he wants to do a two-hour delay, well, then you're changing all the times of your drivers, you might not have enough drivers to pick up, you know, early release, what, so scheduling-wise, it's, it's, it's a huge issue, so, maybe the coordinator's doing his job too well, and people aren't aware of it, but his, his quote to me was, they'll, they'll find out when the big yellow bus doesn't show up to pick up their kids, which, we don't want that, they, they need to be in school, so, um, I don't, my point to him was, I don't know if this is gonna do anything, but it's, it's, it has to start somewhere, so why not start with us bringing it up, maybe someone will talk to their parents, and then, you never know, so, it, it's a big issue.
All right, so, um, one of the biggest, um, problems that I, that I see, or that I've seen, um, is actually just figuring out creative ways to gain the funding for all the large number of initiatives this district has, so, yes, of course, we wanna be the best, that is evident and clear, um, but it does take money and funding to do a lot of the things we wanna do, but we can be creative with that, right? So we can be creative with what we have, and, and get intelligent about how we utilize those funds, um, look for additional ways to, to gain that, that money, and want, you know, I think we want fair compensation if we're gaining and retaining all of our high-caliber teachers, uh, we wanna be able to renovate our early learning center, I know Leah's mentioned that a lot, and it's in our, our vision, um, we have other operational needs that really, uh, require a lot of this funding, so, you know, I wanna be strategic and goal-oriented and fiscally responsible, um, for the district, those are really important things for me, so I, I do think that finding that, that funding is, and getting those funds are gonna be the biggest problem for the district.
So, spoiler alert, uh, for me, it's the ELC, um, post-COVID, um, you know, we had a big referendum, we did the high school, we did updates at the middle school, we, we, uh, we didn't really touch the ELC, we put Band-Aids on it, um, and the Band-Aids and the chewing gum aren't gonna hold much longer, we have to do something with that building, um, and so, the goal was to get through the referendum and then start coming up with plans, well, then COVID hit, and we haven't done anything now for another two years, something has to happen with that building, whether it's tear-down, start over, whether it's updated, whether it's build a tunnel between the ELC and the PC, I don't know, but we need to do something with that building, we have the hallways as storage space because there's not enough room, um, it's the first building that our little people see when they start school with us, and it doesn't have air conditioning, their lunchroom is their gym, um, they, it's, it, it needs some love, um, and also the district office, um, it has a pool, sometimes in the basement, that shouldn't be there, um, I think we fixed the windows, but at one point, if you opened the window, and for a board meeting, you had to go outside, and somebody cranked it, and somebody pushed it in, we, we can't have a district office where you can't close the windows with a crank without assistance, um, so those are, those are my two biggies.
Did keep track this time, I'm, uh, you know, it, it, it's no secret, I think funding is obviously, um, the big challenge facing most districts in this state, and uh, Monthorup's in a position with, um, not being a super-large district with a lot of margin for error, you get to, or, or an epic, uh, in your backyard that can help, uh, fund some of your facilities, so I think we do have to get really creative about that, um, there's, there's a lot of things that we can do to, um, you know, widen out to the state legislature about getting more increased funding, education funding, and we should continue to do that, but I don't expect positive results out of that, I think we're in a little bit of bind that way, I like us to be really creative about how we approach funding, I'm thinking about municipal partnerships, uh, including facilities, um, the continued exploration of grants, on the district tour again, we were walked through with Dr. Salerno and, um, Principal Lundquist, and we were showing how many things were brought into these schools by teachers taking it into their hands to write grants to get the appropriate materials in, which I think is just phenomenal because they know the resources there, and it shows that there's money out there, could we be a little bit more coordinated in our efforts? Perhaps, um, and I'd like to see us continue to try to exploit that, um, you know, several years ago, there was an attempt to create a, uh, Monthorup Education Foundation, uh, that was, you know, looking for like a big money investment, be able to live off the endowment, and tribute funds, contribute funds where funds are needed in the district, I think that's something worth exploring again, um, I think that, uh, yeah, there, there was the, recently, a, a survey that's gonna be put out about an operational referendum, I think we need to be, take a really hard look at it, um, I'm not coming out and saying I'm supporting it, there is no operational referendum at this point, but I think we need to lay out for the community, here's what it would do, here's the cost of not doing it, let's think about what we're doing. My biggest concerns are, um, right now, it's the faculty, uh, retaining high-performing faculty and staff, um, we were here for a, a presentation the other night, and just showing the wage structures, we're, we're not where we need to be, we have a lot of other great things to offer, and we have been very creative in the benefits that we can produce, we have a great environment for teachers to teach in with a lot of, out the lot of the problems of other districts, but we can't get by on our good looks forever, is what it boils down to, so, we need to make efforts to make sure that we're having the right people in the classroom teaching our kids.
It's sounding like a broken record, uh, I, we've heard funding, 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 and that's, that's important, quite honestly, money's the easy part of the equation, not necessarily from the state level, but I know the money's out there, I work for a company that gives over a million dollars every year to K through twelve educators in the education space, right? It exists, there's other companies out there that are willing to do that, too, that's probably the easiest of our challenges, it's a big challenge, to be sure, we need a coordinated effort to do that, but I keep coming back to where we're gonna be ten years from now competitively, and how we look in terms of that, funding's a portion of that equation, facilities are a portion of that equation, I would agree with that, um, but, it comes down to being that destination district, being that, you mentioned dreaming big, uh, man, I, I don't know any other way to dream, right? So, when we look at that, I, one of the things that I've noticed, eh, when we're thinking about teacher shortage, and this isn't a new concept, this has been out there for a while, right, that we've got this problem coming, and it's a big problem, the United States right now, only twenty-three percent of our, uh, our, our educators come from the top third of college students, countries that have a better educational outcome than we have, a hundred percent of their educators come from the top third of their college students, I think we have an erosion of faith in our education system, and this is, we're seeing this societally across a lot of different things, we have erosion of faith in our education system, and erosion of faith in our teachers, and I think it's costing us. As a community, as a district, we need to find a way to address that issue, which I think then helps us address that teacher shortage, pay and benefits, that's a piece of it, facilities are a piece of it, those are all pieces of it, as we look at it, but the idea of hiring professionals, and letting professionals do their job, that's something that we can do, that's, that's a fix, that we can, we can come together as a community, we can rally around and, and make that work, you know, you mentioned getting by on our good looks forever, uh, yeah, we know we can, so at some point, pay has to, we have to address that issue, but until then, we have these, these steps, these incremental steps, I think we can take as a community that are gonna be very, very helpful, and it's getting on the way of our educators and letting them do what they know is best, what we hired them to do as professionals, um, I, I think is something that we wanna look at, that qualified teacher shortage, I, that thing scares me to death, another statistic I read up there is if every single educator, um, student today becomes a teacher, we fill no more than twenty-six percent of our positions over the next decade, boy, that competition's gonna be fierce in the state of Wisconsin, and we cannot afford to fall behind when it comes to bringing the best and brightest here, we wanna continue to deliver top-notch education for our community, for our students, and ultimately, for the people who are gonna be our neighbors, Wisconsin ranks sixth in the nation in terms of, uh, seventy percent of all the people born in Wisconsin end up living in Wisconsin, these students, they're gonna be my neighbors, I wanna make sure that they have the best start we can give them.
Great, um, so the question was specifically besides COVID, and I think one point that I'd like to make is that there, COVID is more than ju, the pandemic recover is more than just recovering from COVID, right, over, we are going to, we're seeing test score issues, we're recovering from learning loss, we've seen behavior challenges, developmental changes in our schools, teachers are rewriting lesson plans again, and it's just gonna take a little bit more to get through that, I, I hope that that's a short-term problem, but I think it's an immediate issue, an immediate problem that we need to keep our eyes on, and make sure that we are managing through, um, and then I think in the long run, a lot of our challenges are things that, that a lot of very bright people up here have already said, funding is going to continue to be a challenge, there is no allowed increase in the state revenue limit this year, and in the past twelve months, inflation has risen seven percent, that's an effective pay cut for teachers, uh, teachers and staff, and paraprofessionals, and everybody, um, and so we are going to have to figure out how to, how to manage that, facilities is certainly a challenge, it, it is, we, the fact that we support five buildings for our students, that's a lot of fixed cost, a lot of sunk cost, and as others have said, we are going to have to make a decision about the, the ELC and the appropriate use of that building in the long run, um, and finally, again, along with what a lot of other people have said, that we need to make sure that we continue to be a destination district, a place that, that we, where we're retaining the high-quality teachers that we have, and where we're, we are recruiting the new graduates that come out, we are, I know we're not, as a district, in our size and location, we're not Madison, we're not Middleton, but the twenty-four-year-old UW grad may not care, right? It's gonna be, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna wanna live closer to Madison, maybe, it's gonna be more, it's gonna be more work to draw them out here, and so the things that we need to do to give them a supportive work environment, a healthy work environment, and give them the kind of workplace that they get to do the things that they're passionate about and wanna do, are the things we're gonna have to keep, and I am.
All right, so for question four, what will be your approach to obtaining student feedback?
Good, I get the easier one started. Um, I, I really enjoy having conversations, so I'm, I'm a huge person that just wants to talk and, and have that conversation, I recognize that that's not feasible with every single individual student in the district, um, but, you know, I'd be happy to find, you know, additional avenues, you know, speaking, you know, going to classrooms, talking with students, um, that said, we do have the school board's approval for the recent, um, survey with the school perceptions, so I think that's a great, um, way to kinda collect some information and understand, you know, themes, um, and then do more targeted outreach based on those themes, and dig into that, and whatever the survey summarize, summarizes for us, um, we really will have an opportunity then to, to, to pick out and figure out where we need to target our conversations even more, um, in the role that I play, I'm always, you know, with all of my team members, all the managers that I, I direct, I always want that to have an open-door policy as well, so I, I think that's hugely important, I'm always wanting to be responsive and, and to be open to that feedback, I think that's part of, part of the, the skill that I can bring, is that I will listen, I will sit there, and I will listen, and I will absorb, um, and let you have your, your place at the, at the table, and, and listen to that conversation.
Uh, I actually went to a lot of student council meetings, not just at the high school, but the middle school, and, um, at the elementary level, and actually, the elementary level is one of my favorites to watch them, um, be all political at the age of ten, it's, it's very, uh, it's very fascinating, they didn't want anything, they were knee-deep in their project, and I was actually in their way, so, um, they were planning a student drive or something like that, um, so, I, I would love to get back to that, uh, we also have a student liaison on the board, he's over there, um, we have students on our committees, um, almost every committee has at least one student, some have two or three, um, also just, I love getting to talk to students, that, part of the reason the dress code policy changed a few years ago is I took my niece shopping, and she said, I can't buy this, I'll get dress coded, I didn't know dress coded was a word, but it was, um, and so I was like, well, I have to look at this policy, looked at the policy, I'm like, hmm, this needs to be rewritten, this is insane, um, so, like, you talk to us, things do change, so we love talking to you guys, and honestly, if you invite me, if my schedule allows, I will come, I love being invited to things, um, especially if I can embarrass any of my kids in the process, I'm totally on board.
Great, and, uh, you know, I think that it's been covered a lot here, a couple of good ideas already, and I think the big thing that I just wanted to start off with was, um, how important it is to get the perspective of students in decisions that affect their lives, both currently, you know, and both currently, you know, and ahead, talk to younger kids about what they're looking forward to in high school. What do they see? What excites them? Talk to older kids, what would they have done differently? I think that you all have a wealth of perspective as the, you know, as the consumer essentially of the education that we're providing. So I'm very interested in that. I want to start, I think, follow up exactly, actually with what Leah was talking about, about how there's all these channels in existence for, for people to contribute. I don't know if they're taking advantage of it as much, and I think I'd love to just encourage students to take part in that. And I think being there physically as a board member is important to show that we're interested, to show that we're listening. The, had a conversation the other day about what's done with student feedback now. And I was really encouraged by this. There's going to be something coming up. I guess it'll be coming up soon, March 14th, a mental health day at the high school that was created specifically in response to feedback from students. I know there's been a lot of questions about mental health and avoiding questions about mental health because it's kind of this big group that goes out there and it's really broad. But I think what the district recognizes, there's a lot of kids that are just sort of struggling with self-confidence, self-esteem, where do they fit? This, the pandemic was, and not being in school, not being around friends as much. It's kind of a rude awakening for people. It's not necessarily in this acute trauma, it's just finding your place again, finding your footing. So they're coming up with this day where kids can explore a lot of different activities to kind of get themselves back right again. I thought that was just a great example of how what kids say to this district does get paid attention to and does get acted on. And I intend to follow up on that if I'm so lucky to earn your vote and be on the board.
Again, this is, a lot of the things have already been said when it comes to collecting student feedback as we look at it. You guys represent a third of the equation, right? Parents, taxpayers, educator staff, students. That's what makes up our educational system. We've got to have a voice. If you don't have a voice, there's going to be problems automatically as we look at it. When I look at a circumstance where you're collecting feedback and you're trying to build response to that feedback, there's two ways to deal with the system that does that, right? There's the top down approach and there's the bottom up approach. You can choose to attack the large system and try to deal with it that way, or you can choose to say, how are we going to fix this problem from, from a bottom up? As a board member, I'm always open, you talked about an open door policy. I've got that with my staff, too, and they probably get sick of it because I walk through their door more than they walk through mine. But, you know, I'm always open to that feedback, but I know there's a ton of these, the student council, the principal council, the focus groups, the mental health day, the student liaisons. I mean, there's, there's a lot of those things and I would, I would echo Adam in saying, please take advantage of that. The more your concerns or your feedback can happen from the bottom up, the better the solution. The closer you get to the problem for finding the solution, the better the solution is. If you come to a board member whose job is to write policy and supervise the superintendent, you may get some unintended consequences, right? So by all means, bring that feedback forward so that that can be thought about from a global perspective. Don't forget to bring it from the bottom up, too, because that's, that's where you're going to find your best solutions. That's where the most qualified individuals to help you are. I care for my kids, but I'm not each of your parents, right? So however, the educator is right there with you. The staff member's right there with you. They're seeing some of the same things that you're seeing. So I would, I would really encourage you to take, take advantage of that. Other than that, if I have the privilege of serving as a board member, by all means, I have a public email address. I think I'm on Facebook. Social media scares the hell out of me, to be honest. So, but certainly let me know. My job would be ultimately to bring it to Dr. Salerno, to the rest of the board, to the staff, those kinds of things, so that local or closer, solutions closer to the feedback or closer to the concern can be developed.
Great. So starting, starting inward and going out, I would also say that, that, you know, me personally, I'm a pretty online person. And so I love getting email. I mean, that's a weird thing to say, but yeah, I know. In certain circumstances, in the right context. No, but, but particularly feedback, opinions, questions, I want to hear them. I want to know what people are thinking and I want to know what's going on. So again, virtual open door policy. Aside from that, but I know there've been some avenues that have talked about that already exist, student representation on the board. I think there's some things like that that could be expanded and made better. My understanding is that there've been some periodic topical student listening sessions. I think something like that could be more routine, more regular, not just when a particular topic or issue comes up, but, but something, you know, it doesn't have to be very frequent, but twice a year or something like that. And I think with the, the way the board is currently structured by having student liaisons, I think it's really important that the board members are in the schools, in the buildings for, that they represent. And so if, so I think that the high school board liaison could set up a meet the board member table in the cafeteria over lunchtime and just be there and be available for whatever questions, feedback, anything like that. And then I think a couple of others have touched on it, but I would, again, I would turn the question back to you. One of the things I've learned over time is that nobody, nobody is going to advocate for you better than you yourself. And that's true if we're talking about your education, healthcare, politics, whatever. You are your own best advocate, so use that voice, speak up, speak out, and provide that feedback yourself.
Yes, I agree. Yeah, everything was touched on here. I guess one of the big things is, as everyone was saying, I think the avenues are in place of, for the students to reach out. Maybe things can be tweaked a little to help make that easier. Also, if, if you're on the board, obviously you're a liaison to a certain building. So that, you know, if you're in the high school, say whoever is on, is the liaison for that building, reach out to them, talk, that's the purpose of them being there is to bring the issues back to the board, to Dr. Salerno, so we can have some further conversations and things can get addressed. And that's pretty much it. I mean, I, I agree with the majority of things that were set up here, so it's, it'll just be a broken record, so thanks.
Thank you. For our next question, how has the school district handled the county masking requirements?
I start, right? So we're at, all right. So whether you agree with the mask mandate or not, it essentially was law. So we did exactly what we were supposed to do and followed it. That's it, that's my whole answer.
Yeah, you know, I just follow up. Obviously, I think this was, question emerged before the end of the mask mandate, but I know that was a really contentious issue for folks. Everyone's been frustrated with COVID itself, with the ramifications of COVID. I'm glad that we get, we're catching a break here and able to look past that. And I'd really like us to look forward. Hopefully, we continue on this rule. The, the one thing that I was going to say there was that, you know, as, as Leah mentioned, it's a, it's a county issue, this way that, that these things work. I think that everyone has a voice in this. I think there were, you know, logical opinions that people wanted to bring forward, and that's where the argument should happen, is at that county level. We are subject to what the county does. And beyond any of that, I think that the consideration in this district was to keep school going this year, which I think that we can all agree was inverse in school going, which is the goal. Whether you agree with the mask or not, everyone was dedicated to making sure our kids were in school. We know it makes a big difference.
Yeah, we saw how it handled it, but I think, you know, that this has become a flashpoint politically, unfortunately, per society, hopefully it's dying down as we see these, these go forward. But I think we can always look back with revisionist history, right? And that can tell us that it was good, bad, or otherwise. But the reality is, I want you to go back and put yourself into the last week of March of 2020. We didn't know a thing. We still are learning stuff about COVID as we go forward, right? So the masks became necessary for people to feel comfortable. There was a lot of other things that went along with it, and it's continued. And Dane County chose to say, hey, I think we need to do this to continue to make people feel comfortable until just recently. Who knows? They may come back. And for me, that's really what it comes down to. I don't know if they work. I'm not, I'm not a special scientist when it comes to health issues. I don't know anything about this stuff, right? But the reality is, I'll put my mask on happily if it makes somebody else comfortable, right? I have no problem doing that. And other people might disagree with that, and that's just fine. We all have our own opinions on how we deal with it. I think the school handled it as best they could, which was, hey, this is currently the law of the land. This is what we have to do.
So as everyone said, that the particular mask requirements were at the necessity of the county law. And I guess the only thing I would add to that is that if we kind of expand that out and talk about COVID mitigation in general, I think that, I think that, I firmly believe that every single board member, teacher, student, parent was acting in good faith with the best information that they had at the time that they made that decision, trying to make the best decision that they could for their students, their health, the health of the community and the safety of the community. And it's, it's just very challenging to second guess that in hindsight, knowing everything that we know now, as Joel said, that we didn't know at the time. But we know so much more now, and that gives us so much more optimism to be able to look forward in how we handle it. And maybe, and maybe a surge comes back and we have to put them on for November of next year and then we take them off again. But, but as that stuff starts to, that starts to lean away, I think that we'll continue to follow ethnic health recommendations and follow county and state and federal law.
So I'm not going to say anything that hasn't been set up here already. I mean, obviously, when COVID first hit, we were in uncharted territory. I mean, that was, it was everything. It was school districts, businesses, your own family. I mean, everybody had to deal with it. Hindsight's always 2020. It's easy, you know, we can sit here and say, well, we should have done this, we should have done that. That's, it's, that's the easy, easy out. As Adam said, hopefully, we're, we can just move forward. Let's look on moving forward. We got a break now. Let's just keep our kids in school. We had a conference tonight and one of the teachers said, you will not believe how much these kids have done since they've been back in school. And I made this comment to Dr. Salerno. I'm not against masks, for masks, whatever you are. I said, if our kids have to be, we need our kids in school, and if they need to have a mask on to be in school, that's the bare, that's the bare minimum, you know? If they have a mask on, we need them in school. Yeah, I want them in school with nothing on. Everybody does. But in order for them to be in school, if they need a mask, we can do that.
So similar to Leah here, you know, the district was required to follow the county mandate, so they did. The one thing that I guess ties a little bit into maybe kind of what Adam said, that I've talked to a lot of parents and students alike, I wish we would have, maybe not even just as a single district, but as all, more districts in, in Dane County, maybe advocated for choice a little bit more. I do, I, I recognize it has to be at the county level, you know? And I, I will say that I was an advocate for choice on several of those, those calls. And that, that's the one thing that I think we maybe could have done differently.
For question number six, has there been enough transparency between the school board and the community? And if not, how would you improve it?
I get to go first on this one. You know, I, I think I'm going to start just by going back a little bit and talk about the significant strides that we've made since Dr. Salerno has been in the current board, has been in position. I know that there was a huge concern about transparency for the time he was hiring and communication was a big point of that, making sure that we were out in front on issues, you know, big issues, little issues, whether it's, I shouldn't say little, but like functional issues, you know, snow, snow emergencies, that type of thing. Are we getting the right information into parents' hands in time to make decisions that benefit their kids? That basic, to the big stuff, to the big contentious stuff. So I really feel like we've done a good job in that respect. And as a board, as a board member, I would be very committed to all these open, open meetings, notifications, commuting, engaging students, parents, other community members for input along the way. I think it's really important when you make decisions and what you believe in, when you, when you've gone through all the material and you've made the hard choices to stand up for what that is, lay it out there for people, explain, you know, accept the criticism and accountability that comes back at you. I will say that I think that a lot of materials are out there already. People may not know how to navigate and find them. So could we do a better job as a district in that and spelling it out and leading people there? You know, probably. I think, again, communication, you know, any time that you can have more communication is better. People don't mind being reminded twice, that's, that's just fine. I do think, as I mentioned earlier, just that I feel like we've got a great story to tell in this district. And I think that we should be really proud of it and broadcast it. Little successes, big successes, the challenges. Put it all out there for people to know what we're going through, especially, you know, I know there's stats out there. Dr. Salerno are trying to figure out the validity of how many folks aren't disconnected from this district, don't have kids, aren't a teacher. There's a lot of people in this district that don't get that everyday exposure that a lot of people in this room do. And we got to keep them in the loop on what's going on. They're hoping to contribute, they're seeing the output, you know, neighbors down the street, workers that they hire. I think that we should really broadcast everything that we are doing and the challenges that we face.
Yeah, I would agree with a lot of, this question is always interesting, transparency, depends on how you define it, right? If it's simply being able to see what the board has done, I think our board has done a pretty good job over the last while. I get pretty regular communications from the board about what happened at the last meeting, what they had for lunch. No, not quite that, but, you know, I get pretty regular communications about that. We see open meetings that are recorded, that's good stuff. Summary recap of the meetings, email communications. I've never had an issue if I felt like talking to a board member or talking to an administrator, never had an issue getting an audience on the phone or in person or wherever that might be. If somebody has had a different experience, if I've been lucky enough to be a board member, I'd love to hear it because that obviously needs to be addressed. But I have not had any issues with that. I think our transparency has been, has been solid. However, piggyback on what Adam said, over 70% of our, our school district doesn't have a child in school, right? We have got to make sure that those people understand what their tax dollars are doing and what good it's doing. Because again, I keep coming back to, you guys are going to be my neighbors, hopefully my friends. You're going to be my neighbors, too, right? So, and that applies to every taxpayer in, in the, the school district of Mount Orin. We have got to find a way to get to those people. And we can have some of that through local papers, some of those kinds of things. Is there more we could do? Yeah, probably. There's probably some additional community outreach around, do we need to build a website that's specifically on community outreach? Do we need to be more targeted in terms of Facebook ads, some of those kinds of things? I think those are things that would be helpful with reaching back to other 70% of our district that are putting dollars into what we're doing here.
Great. So I also think transparency can be a bit of a, a bit of a tricky issue. And what might be, it's kind of in the eye of the beholder, right? What some person might think of as not transparent, another person might think of as weak communication and complete communication. And so it's certainly important to note that as the, the school board, you know, we're subject to the Wisconsin open, open meetings law. By law, the activities of the school board are, are public and you can find them on YouTube and on the website and in the, and in the notes and in the recaps. And so, you know, over the past, as I've gone looking, then I've certainly seen that, you know, every movement of the school board is documented and is out there if you're willing to dig and find it. And anytime I've had a question, I've been able to find it. Or if I haven't, I ask a question and I've gotten a direct and same day, in most cases, response on that question as well, whether it's a teacher, administrator, staff. But the other thing that I've observed is that I've been able to find it, but it's not always easy. There's a lot of clicks, there's dead links, there's a lot of email, and, and it is, it can be, we're all very busy people. There's a lot of clicks, there's dead links, there's a lot of email and, and it is, it can be, we're all very busy people. We get a lot of information from us from a lot of different sources. It can be challenging to sort through that and navigate all of that. So I think there are definitely improvements that we can make in constant public communication. And the other thing that I would say is that sometimes what I think happens is that sometimes when people feel like they don't, we haven't been transparent, they don't know enough, it's not necessarily because they don't know what happened, it's because they don't know why something happened. And Kristen alluded to this earlier, I, I also firmly agree this, with this idea that, that going a step further and as elected officials, being accountable for your votes and accountable for your decisions and explaining not only what, but why is really important and can go a long way to help ease some of those concerns that decisions just happen and nobody knows why.
So, it's me, yeah, okay, thank you, number four. So transparency, I mean, honestly, I, I agree with Joel and Adam making the point of, it's, it's not so much even the parents of the students, it's, it's the other percentage of people, as Joel said, 70% of the community that they're, they're probably not linked into the, the school board or the school's emails. There were times I, when I was out walking, talking to people, like, I would talk to them about things and they, they had no clue, like, they just didn't have the access to the information. So in order to, I think transparency on any level can be improved. I'm not saying it's bad where we're at, but it can be improved. So, um, to me, taking those steps and figuring out, as Carly was saying, you know, sometimes clicking on some of these sites, like for me, I'm not, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not a computer genius guy. You know, my wife can find something in two seconds and it takes me five minutes. So maybe the simplicity or just me not understanding it. But, um, I think everything can be tweaked and willing to listen and explore the options to make it better. And that's, to me, that's what a board member does. We, we explore and we find out ways to make everything better for the community, the school and everyone.
Okay. So, um, I would say not necessarily all the time for transparency. Uh, I would say that some, many times it did feel like decisions were already made before the board meetings actually occurred. And that debate and critical questions, it may have happened prior to the meeting, but without hearing those conversations, it gave a perception that that didn't happen and we just started rubber stamping a critical decision. So I think it's more about how do you bring to light the debate and the conversation that maybe did occur or the thought process that happened prior to the meeting? And I recognize we can't have five hour long meetings every single time we have a board meeting, but somehow bringing that why and that conversation that actually occurred and some of the, the critical points that maybe turn people's thoughts, bringing that to the surface. And I think that would go a long way for transparency. Excuse me. You know, I'm being open minded, um, in, like, in those forums then and being able to change or pivot your opinion. So you may hear some things that there were, you know, parents in open community forums where there was conversation that, um, it just, you know, if you, if you spoke or if you heard someone speak, it didn't seem like it, it made a change in the decision. And that's, that was the feel, right? So trying to avoid that feeling of what we say as community members isn't heard. So respecting that and somehow, and I get, and there's still the rules, like they can't actually interact in that conversation. So I think it's just being thoughtful about how we come, come forward and, and talk about what went into the decision. Oh, and one more thing, not sugar, not sugarcoating the tough challenges. So I think we, we love to be a great community, but we also have to be able to present our flaws and be able to then be open to, okay, we know we have this problem and how do we then address it? I think it's, it's sometimes challenging, you're like, wow, everything's like peaches and cream? I don't feel like that's accurate, you know? So I think that that's really important, that we don't, um, sugarcoat anything and that we do bring forward. I think that's the way that we, we can take on the challenges as a community a lot easier is when everybody knows what the challenges truly are and then we rally around that. Again, as everyone has said, this community is awesome. I love being a part of it. I love the people, I love walking the streets and, and all that. And I think the more transparent we are with everyone, um, everyone will go to bat for what we need to be even better.
So you brought a really good point. So our meetings are recorded and everybody's brought up, we have our meetings recorded, we have our board recap that goes out, we have Facebook, we have Instagram, we have a website, we have stuff in the board mail. Um, but like our committee meetings aren't necessarily recorded. And a lot of the discussion that goes on happens at those meetings so that we don't have five hour long board meetings. And so that might be something we could do with, to help with the transparency is to see, is to, is to record some of those meetings. They're not usually, they're, ah, they can be exciting. It's a lot of posses, it's a lot of ifs, you know, musts and shoulds and shalls. And that's where we hammer all those things out so we don't have to do it at the board table. We also have a community and legislative committee, that's a board committee. That committee is often looking for ways to engage the community. We've had listening sessions where we've gone like concerts in the park, where we've gone and set up in the shelter and to have people come talk to us. And most people don't wanna talk to us because they're there to hear the music. But we've tried things like that and, and we can always do better. I'd also like to highlight our information and advocacy reports. If you haven't seen them, talk about transparency. We have them on everything, how many kids are taking AP classes, what scores they're getting on AP classes? Are they better or worse than last year or the year before? How many students open enroll in, out, all of that? They are fantastic. I, I know I posted a link, I think in the, on Facebook, a few different places because people have asked questions and it's phenomenal data, so I highly recommend checking that out.
All right, thank you. Question, there are essentially two parts, but for the first part, uh, do you think only two options, which are French and Spanish, are enough foreign language opportunities for the students? And the second part of this question is, what should be the role of the district in providing a skilled workforce for local businesses?
This is a fantastic question. And this, this drives right to the cross of what schools are supposed to be doing, right? So first of all, when it comes to foreign language, no, two options is never enough. However, when we're looking at it and thinking about how we're delivering that, we have chosen to deliver foreign language in the traditional education method, classroom teachers, group of students, that whole thing. I've saved all my funding conversation for the last three questions here, so bear with me. But that, that's where we run into the funding. So if we're going to look at further expanding opportunities, we have to be creative in how we do it. Whether that be online, whether that be outsourcing that, partnering with colleges, universities, other schools maybe, that might be a way to do some of that kind of stuff. There are costs associated with that, but hiring a Japanese teacher versus bussing a few students over to Verona might be, Japanese is an example, I don't know, maybe it's a different language, Swahili, you pick. And I, there's, there, there can never be enough choices in terms of educational offering. We just have to be creative in how we offer it. It can't necessarily be through the traditional method because we might not be able to actually fund it. The second one, providing a skilled workforce. I think, you know, when we talk about a skilled workforce, it depends on what the definition of a skilled workforce is, right? So do we expect our, our high school students to graduate with every technical skill in the, in the books? For some people, that's exactly the right answer and that's the way they need to go, but for others, not necessarily. I have the privilege of sitting on the business and marketing board for the school, uh, for Madison Schools. And this is, this is a common conversation we have. What are the skills that our high school students are supposed to graduate with? Critical thinking skills, not what to think, that's not any good job to teach you, but how to think, yeah. And I think back to my high school experience and it's foundational in terms of the framework that I rest my decisions on. You know, presented with a problem, okay, this is how I'm gonna solve it. Whether that's the traditional scientific method or whatever else I come up with, right? That's, that's what it is, the critical thinking skills to be able to approach a problem and deal with it. Problem solving methods, a piece of that, and then the interpersonal skills. I think those are the technical skills that our high school and our local schools should be really focusing on. We talk a lot at some of this stuff, just, we get employers in in Madison and then talk about, hey, when a student comes in for an interview, did they shake your hand? Did they push their chair? I mean, some of the really basic stuff, um, that, that would be really helpful as, as you guys are starting to look forward and thinking about, how am I gonna interact with these community members? And that's about building confidence, that's about all kinds of different things as we look at it. I think those are the technical skills that our schools should be focusing on. In terms of the specific technical skills, I don't even have the technical skills I need for my job and I've been doing it 17 years, so that's not, that's something that's reachable, right? So, um, but if we can focus on, uh, critical thinking, problem solving methods and interpersonal skills, I think that gives you guys a leg up when it comes to walking into that first interview, whether it be with a college, whether it be with an employer, I don't care where it is. Those are the things that are gonna help you and that's what we need to focus on as a school.
All right, so, um, in a, in an ideal world, I, I agree, no, two languages isn't enough. I'd love to see us be able to offer more, but it comes with the challenges. It's just one of those costs that has to be prioritized among the others. I, I think what I will say, having that variety available, we know is good, right? Because it gives, if you're interested in a topic, you're going to be more motivated to learn and your outcomes are going to be better. I would also say though, that any foreign language that you learn, I think it's important that you're, you're going to get this, you're going to get very similar skills from that, whether it's French, Spanish, any other language. It changes your brain, exposes you to other cultures and ideas and that, that's, those are really great things you get regardless of which language it is that you're studying. As far as, um, providing a skilled workforce for local businesses, I, I think that there are a couple of different schools of thought of what is the mission of a public school? What's the purpose of a public school? Is it to produce good citizens? Is it to teach you academics, to make you know math, to, um, or is it to prepare you for the workforce? And, and I think, I'm personally of the mind that schools are here to help you prepare to be productive and contributing members of society. And we know that that happens in a lot of different ways. Many of you will go to college, many of you will not. Many of you will go right into the workforce or take some, some other path. So the skills that schools should be teaching, similar to what Joel said, are fundamentally those things that are gonna help you regardless of which path you take. The critical thinking, the problem solving, the group communication and interpersonal relationships, along with a curiosity, like a lifelong curiosity. You need to get into your job and, and your first job and learn not only that job, but have the curiosity and the skills to be able to build that and find your second job and your third job and continue to grow beyond that. So to that end, if we're talking specifically about, um, local businesses, we know that students learn differently. Some students learn audibly, some read, some need hands-on and learn better in experiential settings. So to whatever extent we can bring in local businesses to help provide more variety in terms of how you learn, um, that, that would be great. We should develop more local partnerships to bring people into sponsor mentorships, internships, guest speakers, those sorts of things. Those are the kind of relationships we should be developing to give all of you the opportunity to learn in a way that is most effective for you.
So I agree with, uh, the offering of two languages, um, maybe exploring some other options. As Joel said, it probably doesn't make sense to bring in a teacher, you know, if we're gonna have 10 students participating or, you know, we can find out participation if someone wants. If we have 10 kids that wanna, what'd you say, Japanese at Verona, you know, might be easier to bus them there or just explore the avenues of offering more. As far as, uh, sorry, this, the skilled workforce for local businesses, that one hits home for me because I'm a mason at my own business and I see daily plumbers, excavators, I mean, it, it does, framers, it doesn't matter. If you go to a construction site, if you find a contractor, that's the boss, and he says, nope, we're good, we're good with our workers, um, that's, that's a rare find. So for me, I believe that everything as far as like your tech ed, the mechanics, uh, that side of school, it's, you're not gonna learn everything in a book. You, you need your lab, you need to be in the shop and maybe apprenticeships, anything that would help these kids move on to that next level. It's, we're not all created, you could probably pull up all of our resumes and they look totally different. There's no, you know, four-year degrees, there might be masters, doctors, it, every, everybody's different. So to me, those kids that are in those, in that avenue, I should full hearted, 100% into it because first of all, you're gonna get the hands-on edu- education on the job education. If, say you do an apprenticeship or when you leave school and you learn, um, it, it can't be taught in a book. And it's, it's, from my own experience, you, you can, you can put a situation, say, on a construction site, you could hypothetically put one in a book and never, it, it never works out that way. We, we get architectural plans that we have to read an architectural plan and I can clearly see this visibly, I can see from the plan, this is not gonna work, but the architect's program or whatever designed it this way. So it's, it's, it's situations like that that can't be taught. It's, it's all self-learn on the job.
Sorry, you have a tickle. So I, similar to what everyone has said already, while there's likely never enough options, I feel like two options is adequate for, for now. However, if we do have passionate students who wish to, you know, learn a different language, we should as a district help them find the language immersion program that, that can support that. When I was in high school, and I'm laughing because we had a student who pursued Japanese.
Excellent example.
It's a great example. Um, and our district, just they, they rallied around and they found what they needed to find. They found an immersion program and online at the time, this was many years ago, so online wasn't quite really, um, the avenue quite yet, but found an online teacher who could teach that Japanese and that, and you know, that student thrived in that, in that foreign language. So I think there are opportunities for us to do those kinds of things as necessary if we have passionate students who wanna pursue a different, um, language. As far as a skilled workforce, um, I think it is extremely important that our district teaches the skills necessary to pursue your passions. In doing so, you know, we need to ensure that students are prepared to enter the workforce, live on their own, even manage their own businesses, um, teaching money management, resume writing, interviewing skills, working with various different personalities, so again, that interpersonal, um, interaction, uh, business strategy, home and car maintenance, please, um, and similar, you know, similar life skills, they're really important. That, that sets you up for success in, in any avenue that you're gonna take. You know, I don't know how many times, I don't, I didn't realize this when I went to college, but, um, there were kids who had not ever did their own laundry. I couldn't believe it, not the school isn't responsible for that one in particular. But you know, there's, there's different aspects of that where I do think that as, as a school district, we can incorporate some life skills into a lot of our, a lot of our teaching. And additionally, the promotion of the skilled trades education, especially when they're in state of the art facilities, is something I feel is really important. You know, we did walk through there. I would like to see more students in those classrooms.
I would like to see more students in those classrooms, um, and utilizing, you know, what we built. It's beautiful, it's gorgeous, it's amazing, it's awesome. Um, and, and promotion of that area would be, would be really great. I'd like to see a senior design program, to be honest, or like a, a design program, um, where students, um, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what topic that you are passionate about, but you get your year to work together as a team and, and build around that, um, design something, come up with a strategic plan for it, come out at the end, maybe even present to the community something really great that you've done. Um, it, it takes a lot of the different aspects of what you're gonna need in any avenue that you take to build, um, upon that teamwork. Um, you know, working through speaking in front of people, which is not always the most comfortable thing to do. All, all the different things that you need to, working with challenging situations, working with different dichotomies of, of people, um, interacting. So, I do think that all, all kids should feel that no matter their path after high school, that our district has set them up for that success.
Um, so I would love to see more foreign language. We do, the however, um, you know, you have class size issues and staffing issues, like everyone said, but that doesn't mean we couldn't do some sort of independent study and get, you know, there's Babbel, there's Rosetta Stone, there's Duolingo, and do some sort of project where we don't have to bus you somewhere else. Granted, there's not gonna be someone on staff if you get stuck, you're gonna, you're gonna have to figure it out, but that's a, that's a very good life skill, to be able to just figure it out. As far as the workforce, I mean, our mission, we read every time we have a board meeting, is to make you productive, responsible, and self-filled members of society. So, that, that's our whole mission. So, um, interview skills, super important. Laundry, soup, art, art teaches you which colors go together, so if you don't count that down, you have failed in the art department. Teach, I mean, I have, I have heard stories from, from human resources where students have, or potential candidates have brought their parents to an interview. So, teaching you that that's not gonna get you a job. The handshake, um, all, all of that, all of those important life skills, and all the skills everybody's already said, that's kind of the bad part about being later in the, just say ditto, I guess.
You know what's really bad is having to drop another Japanese reference. I think we're all from the eighties and nineties, I think.
Yeah, yeah, seriously, it's a totally, Chinese would be better, youngsters in this room, so.
Mandarin.
It's all about Mandarin these days. Um, I actually have a niece that who's out in DC who takes Mandarin at a school. Can't offer that here, probably, but, um, yeah, I think that, first of all, I just, I love that there is an interest in this. Um, and I love that it's been surfaced to the point where you wanna ask it as a question, that students feel comfortable about, I'm interested in exploring something else, that's what we need. My Japanese references, when I went to school, and I graduated in ninety, a little, little school on the south side of Milwaukee, blue collar town. The superintendent came in and installed one of those, like, twelve-foot satellite dishes. Not the one where you sit at home and, you know, just push the button, it was like contacting aliens. But, um, they, they had all these processes available that you could take, and Japanese was one of them that they were really trying to, like, just throw out there 'cause it was kind of exotic at the time, I guess, for us. But, you know, you look at the opportunity now with where technology has advanced, and I'd really love to see us explore that. I know that we can't do that alone, but I'm thinking, wonder about a consortium of schools? I know that, that exists on some level, and maybe we can explore that a little bit further. Because I, I just, I want to provide those opportunities. I saw something the other day, just as an aside, that Madison schools are, they just eliminated their last Latin, um, teacher, uh, and that's been, like, over a course of thirty years at the various high schools. I was just thinking to myself, you know, like, A, credit to anyone who wants to take Latin, but B, um, you know, it just seems short-sighted that they couldn't have found a solution for this, and we can't think about ways to get that done. But I do agree that what I wanna do, I think for all course offerings here, is to make sure that we have the support in place for it. Uh, you know, love to dream, love to get, like, you know, this singular opportunity, but, um, we have to think through and make sure there's a right support structure in place for anything that we do. And then, as far as the workforce goes, um, yeah, I could, you know, I was kind of flipping this around in my head a little bit about, what should the district's role be in equipping students with the skills they need to flourish in businesses, rather than, um, you know, thinking about it as a pipeline? I wanna put it into students' hands, where they wanna take this. Again, really excited about the STEAM possibilities. Uh, the, start on the technical end of things, the big banners that hang outside there, I don't know if any of you have had a chance to look through there. Showcasing careers, like actual careers that you can get into, showing what apprentices may got average, showing what journeymen may got average. If that doesn't get your attention in high school, and you know that, that, you know, that going to law school isn't your future, I don't know what wills. I love that we're, we're taking steps like that. And I can't echo enough about the life skills and the, the character being important. I think, you think that's a lot of baloney sometimes when you're in high school, like, just, you know, I'm the best writer, I'm the best mathematician, that's all that matters. That's not how the real world works. It's, it's people, it's having good character. People wanna work with people they can trust, who, who communicate well, um, who, who know basic skills. And you can build a lot of, they'll, they'll take care of you. If they, if they think that you've got promise, they'll show you the roadmap to get there and develop your skills further. So I really do think it starts with a lot of those, a lot of those basics, and just doing anything that we can to allow kids to practice, practice, practice on these skills. Get them into the labs toward, um, get them into the video lab, write whatever it is, it's all about practice.
Thank you. What are your opinions about local businesses being able to pay for naming rights in the district as a way to bring in added funding?
That's me, right?
Yes.
So, I, I, I do think that there can be a place for a well-thought-out naming program, um, and not opposed to considering it, but I think there's a lot of considerations that go into it. And I'll also just take a step back today, like, having a career in philanthropy before, I've seen what, you know, you match the right donor and the right need, and I've seen how powerful that can be and how impactful that can be. I, I think there are a lot of, a, a lot of things to think through very, very carefully, though, first. A lot of times, these things may or may not actually be, when they've been implemented in other schools, they, they may not necessarily be at the level that they're life-changing amounts, right? The, uh, school district in Berlin sold naming rights to their fieldhouse for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over ten years, so it's fifteen thousand dollars a year, out of a budget of thirty-three million dollars. It's a lot of overhead and policy when you're really talking about additional revenue that comes out to about six dollars per student, per year. So, um, so we, we just wanna think about taking on the overhead of managing that kind of program for the things that, that we would get for it. It can be, other schools have used it to, um, fund very specific things, school boards, small capital projects, those kinds of things. You can, you know, meet, you can use it to meet a need. I think that things that we have to be very, very careful and conscious of are marketing. We don't wanna turn the student body into advertising targets, so you need to consider what your policy is in terms of things like, are you gonna name something after soda, fast food, alcohol, those kinds of things? What happens if a company is very reputable now, but two years later does something disreputable and their name is on your building? So, you've, you've gotta just really think through, have solid policies. And I think the community needs to be brought in, and anytime there's money involved, the community needs to brought in, needs to be brought into those discussions. They need to be very thorough, very outward-facing. And so we just need to, if that were a road that we would pursue, which, again, I wouldn't categorically deny it, but would just need to be done very thoughtfully and methodically.
Well, I, uh, I actually support, uh, private sector sponsorships. Obviously, as Carly was saying, there, there would have to be many guidelines and specifics, what we can and what we can't do, or what we can't take, obviously, like she said, soda, alcohol, all that good jazz. But, uh, I guess I look at it as, I mean, multiple times up here, we've talked about funding. And if, in my eyes, if, if we can bring in money, control the advertising naming rights to what the community, what the school board agrees on, um, I see it a win-win for everybody, so then we can allocate money for, say, a program that is down on budgeting or gives the students a better opportunity. So, um, I, I think it's one of those things, it, it would be like, each situation would be analyzed. It's, you can't, I don't think you can just paint a broad brush and say, yep, we're gonna allow everything. It's, everything would have its place and would be determined if it's beneficial, first of all, beneficial to the kids, and, uh, and just, that's the process that would have to take place. But I'm definitely open-minded to it, it's, it, it would be another avenue to try to generate some funds.
All right, so I'm in agreement with that as well. So, you know, I look at it, if it benefits the kids, the name doesn't necessarily, necessarily matter, right? We'd have our rules and guidelines around what, um, would be respectable. But, you know, if someone wants to pay for a district pool and put their name at the bottom of it, and the kids, you know, don't care about what name's at the bottom of it, they just wanna swim, compete, and take swimming lessons, I, I think that that'd be something that we would wanna look into. Uh, I think that, yeah, I agree with it, yeah.
Should I do that one for right now?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, yeah, and, uh, Kristin touched on it, the legendary story of the G. Who knows if it's even real? I just heard it so many times that I love the story, and, uh, Dr. Goddard said pledging to build a pool if he put a G at the bottom of the pool, and they said, no, we don't want that. And right now, we don't have a pool, uh, which, and it was an issue close to both of our hearts. Um, I think that everything's been said before about having guidelines, about having, um, you know, clear policies, a lot of safeguards against how this would be done. It absolutely has to be done that way. You see too many pet projects, you see, uh, you know, Suzie's, uh, your mom pledges money for the tennis team, but, uh, you know, another sport is a lot more in need of it, that kind of thing. But I think that this is all the stuff that we can, we can overcome these obstacles. A lot of other districts do it, a lot of policies are in place. And I really think that it is, um, it important to get some funds, and also to raise some, um, interest level from the community. This goes back a little bit, just to step back, um, to have a strategy in place, to having a really firm strategy about where you wanna go, what the needs are, have this ranked order priority of some things that you need done. Because we've seen it time and time again in this town, when you put out a need and people believe in it, and believe in what you're trying to accomplish, they'll step forward. The money comes forward, I've seen it firsthand in neighbors helping neighbors the last couple of years. We didn't know if we'd have enough rent to cover the next month when we started that thing right outside of the pandemic. We put out word, we said what we were gonna do, we followed through, and we have been hugely blessed with the overwhelming support of the community. We've seen it, uh, you know, in the Norris Golf Course, where people stepped forward and put down two thousand dollars to be part of the board. It was, you know, it's worth about as much as Packer stock, really. They saw that, what it was important to the community and something that they wanted to be a part of. But I really do think if you have that structure in place, and you're looking long-term, and you're able to really carefully navigate how this is done, then it's a good thing. I think the one good point there, too, is about having something in place if something goes south with whoever or whatever it was that gave money. I don't know if any of you watch Ozark, but I'm thinking about the Martin Luther Bird family foundation, like, probably wanna turn that money down after the game.
Apologies. So, having been on the board again nine years, this has come up probably every other year. What I really wish is that the, that we would have enough funding, that we wouldn't have to have this conversation. But basically, everything you said is, is what comes up. We, we have, we've had this discussion, we've had people come in, um, the community, we've had large listing sessions, and it comes down to, where is the line? When you talk about alcohol, for example, we have a lot of restaurants in this town that are also either breweries or cider houses, things like that. Is that a restaurant? Is it alcohol? Where does it go? Same with you talking about tennis. We, we had a parent come in and say, okay, so are the tracksuits now sponsored by, you know, Colvers? Who do you take money from, who do you not take money from? And ultimately, we always decide not to pursue this route.
The answer to the very specific question is yes, it has to be a consideration. We know for the next three years, we're not getting any increase in public funding. Public-private partnerships have worked very, very well in other sectors of government. There's no reason why it can't work here. We need to be thoughtful, we need to be careful. Yes, does it go sideways, we gotta deal with that. But I think this really opens up the broader discussion around funding, right? So, selling naming rights is one thing. I, I'm not sure the school should be in the business of selling anything. However, partnering with the, the private sector on getting things done, I think there's tremendous opportunity there, and I'd love the opportunity to work on it. As an example, grants were mentioned before. Right now, the grant process in our school is a teacher gets a great idea, teacher puts in all the work, a teacher executes on that grant, and those students are better for it. We need to find a way to build a repeatable process as a school where we can continually source additional resources. We have to find a way to do that. What does that open up to us? Is there job-sharing opportunities? I know there are other five oh one C threes in the organization that could benefit from a grant writer, right? What if we looked at the idea of, hey, the school will cover fifty percent of this, and the community will cover the other fifty percent? Are there, are there opportunities like that? We think about a marketing class, or think about business classes. Would it make sense for our students to say, or for, for us to look at the idea of partnering with a local business where the students spend their time in the business, or in the, in the classroom, learning from the book, if you will, but then spend a week with those business owners? I know they would. I own my own business, I run internship programs for high schoolers all the time. I, I have the capacity to take a week out of my, and show you my business, this is how I do it. It's not necessarily the right answer, but it's a way to do it. What does that do? Well, that frees up that teacher's time all of a sudden to think about what's next, what's exciting? Where can we go from here? I think there are tremendous opportunities here. When I think about grant writing, when I think about a communication specialist at the district, we don't have those things. When I think about marketing advocates at the district level, we don't have those things. We live in Dane County, we compete in Dane County. Go back to the Moneyball conversation, right? Billy Bean's famous quote, "If we try to compete with the Yankees in the same way that the Yankees do things, they'll, they'll wipe the field with us." It's gonna happen to us here, too. We're competing against Madison, we're competing against Verona. We have to think different, and we have to be better at this kind of thing. It's gonna take careful thought. And to your point, Carly, we have to be careful on the overhead side of it. But if we can build a repeatable process that continually sources and curates additional resources, that's a positive use of overhead. We can make that work, there's no reason we can't. I go back, again, I talk about my company. We give over a million dollars a year to the K through twelve education space, and we do that without any naming rights attached, without anything attached. There are a lot of other companies that have philanthropic arms. We have to find a way to get to those companies and sell what the Malfor admission is, sell why it's important. We can do that.
Thank you. So, for our last question, um, why doesn't schools start later for the high schools since teenagers wake up later than adults?
I love this question. The reason is, you're, the adults are at work to support you. I actually, I laughed out loud when I saw, I appreciate the question. I actually was thinking about trying to spin it the other way. It's like, okay, you said high schoolers, so high schoolers are what, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen? Eighteen makes you an adult, so then should we maybe try starting school a little earlier to maybe prep you for life, you know? But I'm sure there's scheduling reasons why the time is what it is, I'm, don't need to get into that. I, my kids love getting on the bus at seven thirty-four, so whatever time you guys start, I think it's a great time.
Okay, yeah, um, as noted before, uh, in the previous questions, it's important to prepare teenagers for the workforce, and being prepared and ready for the day is one of those skills. Um, I would also. I would also argue, I would like to see the paper that says that teenagers get up later than adults. Where are the statistics on that one? Because I do know some adults, it's pretty late. And actually, some teenagers who get up really early. Having been one in my, you know, having some early morning basketball practices at like 6:00 AM before the school day starts, you know, getting up at the, you know, when it's dark and going, and then staying until, and leaving when it's dark, especially in Wisconsin. Although, yay, spring ahead this weekend, get ready for it. But y'all won't be excited about that, I'm sure. Prepare.
So as we've talked about transportation issues, and this basically is a lot what it boils down to, we have looked at studies, there are studies that say you would benefit from a later start, 100%. However, we can't even get bus drivers to do a late start for snow, so I don't know how we do that. And unless you get everybody in our sports conference to also switch, I don't know how sports would work. We have kids already who sometimes have to leave at about 2 o'clock in the afternoon to go drive to wherever their sporting event is. Now they'd leave at 2, but if school, because if you start later, you have to go later. You don't get done at the same time. So if you start later and go later, now instead of missing maybe an hour and a half, maybe they're missing two and a half hours of class. So unless you could get everybody else on board and find us some bus drivers, I'm not sure how we, how do we make that work?
Yeah, you know, I actually did a little research on this because I wanted to come in with some facts. I'd be curious to know, with all the CDC restrictions of the last few years, you know, kind of a three-letter word for a lot of, a lot of people in high school probably, but they support later start times for kids. The, it's also, you are not alone. 93% of high schools, 83% of middle schools start before 8:30, which seems to be the sweet spot. You know, as Leah mentioned, it really is just sort of, setting transportation aside, because if everyone moved, then everything would move. California put in a law where they're mandating that high schools start at 8:30, starting this fall. That's the kind of level, the scale that it would take to make that happen. So this could be a great course in civics for you, start going down to the Capitol, talk to your legislators about it. You know, the one thing I'll throw out there, and this is not a campaign process, promise, but there's an early release, one day a month. Is that a late start instead of an early release? Another nugget for kids to chew on if you want to campaign for something.
Like Adam, yeah, I chose to do some research on this because I was looking at this and I was like, okay. My son's a teenager and he beats me up most mornings, so I don't know what the deal is. But so, yes, your circadian rhythm changes as a teenager. It does. I think the statistics show that you're most effective right around 10 o'clock in the morning. So if we started at 10 o'clock, it's all downhill from there. That makes some sense. I guess what I would be interested in is what's the result? I mean, all the, all the issues of transportation and all that kind of stuff, certainly. We know that the majority of our high school students already operate at a sleep deficit, right? We know that. That's been studied and shown multiple times. I think this exacerbates the problem. Because now we go later, and then you come home, and now you, now you might have an hour or two at the end of the day to call down before you go to bed. Well, now that gets stretched out. And all of a sudden, you guys are going to bed at 2, 3, 4 in the morning instead of 1 in the morning, or whatever it is. So I think that exacerbates some of our sleep deficit issues as we look at some of these kind of stuff. That's a concern. The other thing is, as an active member of society, the rest of your family is up at that time, and the social interaction, all those kinds of things are missed. When you look at the workforce that works late at night, there's an increase in some of the social and mental wellness issues related to those individuals. For some people, it works fantastic, but for the majority of people, it doesn't. So to be perfectly serious about it, it's a great thought. I'd have to see what the results would be, but I think there are some major challenges with it. So I enjoyed the question.
All right. I will say that the simple answer to why is inertia. If you look back to the 50s and the 60s, schools started at 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning. It wasn't until the 70s with suburbanization and the energy crisis and busing that schools started rearranging to get high school kids to school early, and then other communities matched. So it was a conscious choice 40 years ago, 6, wait, well, yeah. And so there, we're just, we're stuck in this calcified routine now, right, at this point? And as others have alluded to, we know that, that your circadian rhythms change. You naturally don't start to wind down until 11 o'clock at night. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association have all said that schools shouldn't start any earlier than 8:30 in the morning. But as others have also alluded to, changing that comes with a lot of logistical and cultural challenges, right? You have to figure out the busing. If you start later, probably every other school in the district starts later too, given, given how that works, how the, given the transportation. The other thing is making up the hours, state mandates. You're in school for 1,100 hours a year. You either got to tack it on in the summer, tack it on at the end of the day. So navigating those challenges of coordinating with other school districts who maybe aren't on the same schedule, all of that would have to be considered. That said, Madison schools sent their middle school, they started in 2019, pushing their middle schools back to 8:40 starts. It can be done, there are districts that have done it. They are moving over a couple of years, 10 middle schools to start at 8:30, 8:40, going until 3:52. And it also cost them, and it's probably specific to them, it cost them $660,000 to do it, to deal with the transportation and the busing. So I think that it is, there's a, there's a whole movement around starting school later. I think it's something that we absolutely should and can consider if we can figure out how to make it work. There are a lot of challenges to this.
We'd like to thank the school board candidates who devoted their evening to be here tonight. We'd also like to thank everyone who attended this evening. From myself and the Mount Horv High School current affairs class, good night. And do not forget to vote on April 5. Thank you.